Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Okay. All right, good deal. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 3 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Shelley Buehler and I have the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Commission. Joining us this morning, Commissioner Bob Archer.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Kevin Cook.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Consent agenda?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda for one item.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries three to zero.
New business, A, candidate clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Madam Chair, this morning we have one voucher report dated March 2nd, 2016. Total amount of the vouchers is $1,211,233.48. Significant items on the voucher report include capers, approximately $294,000, Willis Company for property and casualty insurance for $585,000, and holding accounts for approximately $110,000. I've reviewed the vouchers and have -- my questions have been answered, so I will make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero.
Number two, consider correction orders.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B, bond council, number one, consider approval of resolution number 2016-21 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $15,860,000 Shawnee County Kansas General Obligation Refunding Improvement Bonds, Series 2016A, B, and taxable Series 2016C.
Good morning, Judge Perry. This resolution will authorize the issuance of these three series of bonds. Series A will be used to prepay a 2009 lease and two KDHE loans, the effect of which will reduce our interest costs by a little over $700,000 between those three prior obligation. Series B will be used to acquire the election voting equipment or the electronic voting equipment that you approved a couple of weeks ago. And then the last piece allows us to control when to go into the market. And before you adopt this, I want to substitute the maturity exhibit because the one that I prepared and delivered on Monday has a type on and is for maturity of 2000.
Thank you, Tom. Are there questions or comments?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Archer to adopt the resolution, second by Commissioner Cook. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Tom.
Item C, planning, number one, public hearing on the request to vacate a flat at 25-foot drainage easement in Eagle Point subdivision number three and consider order of vacation.
Perry, Beagle's trying to get a claim in department. The issue before you is request to vacate a 25-foot wide drainage easement extending across the back of three residential lots. The three property owners seek to vacate the drainage easement as it does not serve any particular purpose and they desire to utilize that land as opposed to its reservation as a drainage easement. This has been reviewed by the Public Works Department. They have found the drainage easement in fact does not support overland drainage flow and therefore is not needed. The City of Topeka has been consulted since it's within their three-mile jurisdictional limit and they have expressed no issues with regard to the vacation. And so it is before you for public hearing and then ultimately for adoption of vacation order.
Thank you, Perry. Move to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. At this time, if anyone is wanting to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and make your comments. One last chance. At this time, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
And approve the request. There's a motion by Commissioner Buehler, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor of the motion say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Thanks, Perry.
Item D, Parks and Recreation, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C-56-2016 with Midwest Sports Productions to provide youth tournaments for baseball and softball at the Bettis Family Sports Complex and the Lake Shawnee Girls' Softball Complex.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. I wanted to go into just a little bit of detail on this. This is not just a contract for tournaments. For many years, we have contracted with MSP to run some tournaments at Lake Shawnee, both the boys' complex and the girls' complex. But here recently with the help of Visit Topeka, and I do have with me today Jeremy McDowell with MSP and Brett Otting with Visit Topeka are both here too. They'd like to make some comments. Darren Tolan, our new sports supervisor, and Sean Osborne, the new outdoor adventures superintendent, have worked to rearrange this relationship that we have with these three parties to bring in, to make it much more of a partnership. What you have in front of you today is just the contract for the field usage, but MSP is actually becoming more of a partner with us and beginning to invest some funds and going to invest some funds and help our foundation out, which will then work with Visit Topeka to continue that process of improving the facilities because then they'll have more success, Visit Topeka will have more success, and Shawnee County Parks and Rec will have more success. With that, I'll kind of stop there, but I know both Jeremy and Brett would have a couple of comments too. Jeremy?
Thanks, Mr. Knight. Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, my name's Jeremy McDowell with Midwest Sports Productions and we've been, as Mr. Knight visited about, we've been kind of a renter-rentee type of relationship for several years where we've come in and rented the facilities. Part of my role besides being with Midwest Sports Productions is I'm the National Fast Fish Director and the Board of Directors with U-SAA. One of the big pushes right now across the country is for us to really establish true partnerships with municipalities, CBV's, you know, Visit Topeka, people like that, to really form a partnership to where we can do a lot more together than out on an island alone. And so when I sat down with Mr. Knight over probably 18 months, 24 months ago, and started talking about this vision, we already were doing a little things with the foundation that he wasn't able to give us aware of at the time. And through the help of Darren and Sean, and then obviously Brett, we were able to come to what we thought was a very successful agreement where we can continue to bring world events, not just your standalone weekend events with teams from, you know, 50, 60, 70 miles, but we can bring national championship events to the city and this county. And then Mr. Knight suggested a three-year contract to where the commitment that they're making to put money back into the facilities, then that there's some guarantee on our end that we continue to fill the facilities more than just annually, but for a three-year stint, which obviously our goal is that this thing re-ups, you know, for several years after we form this partnership. So we just really appreciate the opportunity. We're very, very excited about this and just looking forward to many great years with the partnership with you guys. Thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you.
Commissioners, as Brett is walking up here, I'd like Brett to mention some things too because the economic impact to the entire community of these teams coming in from all over, I guess, the world, all over the world to play baseball and softball in Topeka and Shawnee County is enormous. And I know you know from my past experience, in fact, I used to have a college teacher in which I had intro to state and local government finance. I had that in college three times. And with that, he used to throw me little packages of M&amp;M's when I had the correct answer. So hopefully that's what's going on today too.
I do know Brett Otting does have a couple of things he'd like to say too.
Good morning. Brett Otting, President and CEO of Visit Topeka. I've worked with Jeremy for eight years. It started when I was in the hotel industry. And there is not a finer organization, not just for softball and baseball, but all youth sports anywhere in the Midwest. Jeremy and his organization truly care about the student athlete as well. Return on investment in the nation is six to one when it comes to tourism. For every dollar you spend on tourism nationwide, we're bringing $6 back in. That number is higher when it comes to youth sports. And the reason is because, as we all know, the eight-year-old cannot drive themselves. Mom, dad, grandma, they're bringing their brothers and sisters with them. They all go out to eat, they go to the zoo, they do other things. So a partnership with MSP is a great thing for Topeka and Shawnee County. And they will bring a lot of money into the community and a lot of people that will spend a lot of money. So it's very exciting for Visit Topeka, it's very exciting for the hotels as well. I think I could easily speak on behalf of the hotels today too and say that this is very exciting, this relationship that is for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Brett, before you get back, last year we had the World Series come to Topeka for the girls' softball. What was, how did that economic impact affect Topeka and Shawnee County?
It was, that economic impact for that one event was about $1.5 million in direct spending and that includes all spending across the board. That, as you know, was a great week, a great month with many other events going on. But the amount of teams that come and the amount of people that attend, what's so great about these tournaments is it's not a one-day tournament. And when you get into the world tournaments, it's not just a Saturday evening, Sunday tournament. These events are four or five days, some of them start on Wednesdays or Thursdays. So having one this year, and I believe that they're also working on a second one this year, is going to double that.
So contracts like we are considering today, does that help raise the level of awareness of Topeka and Bettis, our facility in Topeka?
Absolutely does, absolutely does. One of the big things, you know, Jeremy's in a cutthroat industry where a lot of different cities are trying to spend money on their Parks and Rec departments and making their facilities as good as possible. And anytime that we can have a contract that you support, that we can then go out and say that the entire county supports what we're doing and the mission that we're working on with Midwest Sports Productions, that's going to reach out to teams and organizations in other states and know that when they come to Topeka, they're going to be welcome to come in.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, or anyone from the audience?
Madam Chair, I do have one last question.
Yes.
John, how will this affect our interaction with the Pecos League? The Pecos League is also playing at Bettis. Are these going to be two compatible interactions?
The vast majority of the events and the most popular events we have are for younger-aged kids that won't be playing on that same diamond. The Pecos League, when they come, they'll be here for several weeks and then they'll also be gone for several weeks. So that's the task that Darren has is make sure that all of those balls stay in the air at the same time.
So I'm sure that organizations like Visit Topeka want to see more and more play and more and more people at the facility, as do we.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and I remember it wasn't all that long ago that we made, the county made a significant investment in the transformation of playing ball out at Lake Shawnee. And, you know, with continued good marketing and with good management, we've continued to improve upon that, so.
And with MSP stepping up and helping and the fund that they're going to set up through the foundation, the money they put in, I hope it serves as a catalyst for the other hotels and restaurants in town to get on board too, since they'll be making more and more money too to get on board. And that way we can maybe fix the girls' diamonds up comparable to what we're doing with the boys' diamonds. And maybe we just lose that moniker of boys' diamonds, girls' diamonds. Maybe we just have 10 fields at Lake Shawnee for these type of events.
True. All right. Any further comments or questions?
I would move approval of the request.
It's a motion by Commissioner Cook to approve. Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you both for being here.
Number two, consider approval of request of the three program supervisor positions at a salary of $49,318.44, each including benefits, and three sports manager positions at a salary of $46,388.24, each including benefits.
Commissioners, to kind of remind you of some of the past steps that we have taken here, we actually started this process before the county began a comprehensive salary study through CBIZ. When we started that process, I think the county, especially Betty Greiner and Jim Crowell, were aware that the CBIZ stuff was very close to going through. They worked, they had very strict parameters for us to work under there. In fact, the second round that happened with these position reorganizations, we reorganized those to fit into the preliminary studies of the CBIZ study. After the preliminary studies came back, we had another round, and that's what this round is. This completely complies with the CBIZ study with job descriptions and compensation, those type of things, completely complies with the final CBIZ study. Worked really hard with Jim and Betty on getting to this point with it. These are some positions that, as you can just see, we just had one with tournaments. I'm really needing the youth sports managers, the people who are on the ground that'll be working with Jeremy, adult sports managers. These are key positions that we need to get up and running. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, answered online by your comments. Further questions?
Move to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Cook, or by Commissioner Archer, I apologize.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item E, emergency management, number one, consider approval of resolution number 2016-22 adopting the Region J multi-hazard, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dusty Nichols, this is, if you recall, last fall, this was on the agenda. We had some questions. It's rather a large document. We answered those questions. We feel pretty good about it. It's gone through the Council's office and it's in front of you for adoption.
Thank you, Dusty. Question?
I don't have any. I would move approval of the resolution.
It's a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, it's a plan, not a resolution.
Okay. Actually.
It's a resolution.
A resolution that adopts. Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Cook to approve. Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Dusty.
Item F, Public Works Solid Waste, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C-57-2016 amendment of contract C-37-2011 with Century Business Technologies, Inc., to increase the copy limit for both black and white and color images for the Savin C-9135 copier at the current per-image rate.
Good morning. This is Tom Block with Public Works and Solid Waste. This is the solid waste item. And each department has, enters into an agreement with our copier providers and when you enter into those agreements, you apparently estimate what, how many copies you're going to make of each type. This contract that was done back in 2011, since that time we've started doing a lot more copying, significant amount of copying in-house. So when you go over your limit, then you pay a higher rate for copies. So we want to enter into, amend our agreement that increases our limit on our contract, which will keep that rate at the same rate or the lower rate. And Century Business Technologies has agreed to allow us to increase that limit and keep it at the lower contract rate. So that's what we're requesting to do, which is basically give us the ability to copy more at a lower rate. And all the funding for any copies on this particular case comes from the Solid Waste Department, which again is a non-tax entity. So all of these are things that would fund this service. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I have no questions. Madam Chair. Commissioner Cook?
This might be, Tom, I don't know if this is for you or for Director Greiner of the Audit Finance Administrative Services Division, but recently we went out for a RFP regarding our copier contracts. Now we're engaging in a contract.
This is a contract that is not expiring yet.
Okay.
So we will still be obligated to stay with this contract until the expiration date. So this is just amending it to save some money in the remaining term of the contract.
All right, so it will not affect the RFP process? All right, thank you.
Again, I'll move approval of the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero.
Number two, consider awarding bid for culvert pipe sizes as well as custom fabrication to Wellborn Sales, Inc. and awarding bid for end sections for 90-inch and larger pipe to Metal Culverts, Inc.
Commissioner Tom Block again with Public Works and Solid Waste. This is the Public Works item and this is our annual request for quotes, basically, for metal pipe that we purchase to do in-house projects with our own bridge crew who replaces a lot of culverts for us. Essentially what we do is we go out for bids for basically every size of pipe that we potentially could buy throughout the year. And then when we do our in-house design, because we really don't know what sizes of pipes we'll need until we get designs done, and we are doing designs all throughout the year. So we get quotes for every size and thickness of pipe. So we don't get a, we don't bid for a specific quantity. It's just a unit price for each type. We received the bids back from Wellborn and from Metal Culverts. Wellborn, for every size of pipe, had a lower per-unit price except for end sections for 90-inch and larger pipes. I'm not sure why, that's kind of an anomaly, why all of a sudden they had lower prices for those really large end sections. But they were significant enough that we thought if we end up constructing pipes of that size that need end sections, it would be worthwhile just to buy the end sections from them. But otherwise, all the pipe that I called was, Wellborn submitted a lower price. So our recommendation is to award the bid to Wellborn, with the exception if we have pipe 90 inches or larger, then we will give the end section to Metal Culverts. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cook.
Tom, why do we do this in-house? Why not bid out the entire project and have them constructed as we need by the different companies here in Topeka, Shawnee County, the local and state? Does this really save the county any money by doing this in-house?
I think it does because these projects are, they're not that significant of a project. And so with any type of design project, you have, consultants would have startup costs and things of that nature that's pretty much a fixed cost. Those startup costs are just getting set up upon more than what the designers were. And we have the capability to do this in-house. And when you do, when a design consultant does a product, they have to, they have to be so detailed and spend that time and expense to be so detailed to make sure that when we then bid it, that there's no questions. Here, we work with our own crews. Our crews construct them. So we can do a, I guess, a more, I guess, more efficient design, I guess, without having all the details, that we can just communicate directly with their own staff. And so, yes, to answer your question, I think it saves a lot of money.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll move to approve, as noted in the memo, because it does mention everything that you said about awarding the bid to Wellborn except, so just as noted in the memo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero.
Number three, consider awarding bid for the purchase and delivery of 6,250 cubic yards of Haydite lightweight aggregate material to Kansas Sand and Concrete, Inc., in an amount of $290,625.
Commissioner Tom Block again with Public Works and Solid Waste. This is a Public Works item and this bid, we offered bid for Haydite material and that's lightweight aggregate material that we use for our chip sealing of roads. We received two bids, one from Kansas Sand and Concrete and one from Buildex. Buildex is actually the company that is a supplier of the material. Kansas Sand and Concrete got a bid from Buildex to buy the material from them and haul it. And really, you would think that Buildex would have the cheaper price, but the difference here is shipping. Kansas Sand and Concrete can apparently have it hauled in cheaper than Buildex can. So even though there's two different companies bidding, we're getting the product from the same quarry. And the good thing is, Kansas Sand and Concrete is a local company. So it's our recommendation that we award the bid to Kansas Sand and Concrete. And funding for this product comes from our Public Works Road Maintenance Fund. One thing they both did mention, this is all contingent upon the supply that Buildex has. They had to close a quarry of theirs earlier, or like last year, so their production capability is less than it had been in years past. But hopefully we will build the material that we need with them. But anyway, our recommendation is that we award the bid to Kansas Sand and Concrete.
Okay. Other questions or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Archer, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Tom, I just might note that construction has begun on the Willard Bridge and I've had lots of questions. When you go across the bridge, obviously you can't see down to see what's happening. So Public Works has posted a series of pictures each week and the progress. And you don't build a bridge every day, so it's really kind of fascinating. I know lots of people in the northwest area of the county are paying attention to that and they're checking those photos out. They're SNCO.us and they're on the Public Works Willard Bridge page, correct?
Yes, and there shouldn't be a link for each week as we go along. IT is posting, of course, on each step, this woman is doing it on behalf. But each week, I think it says photos from, construction photos, week of, whatever, and then we can see the progress as we go along. It's not a ton of photos, maybe eight, 10 each week.
Yeah.
Some of them are, yeah, it said this is really a once-in-a-lifetime project. So it's really pretty interesting. And if any of the other Commissioners, Commissioner Buehler came out Tuesday because we were having a construction progress meeting, she came out and we took her out. So if any of the other two are interested, we'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, enjoy it.
To show you. The weather's going to be really getting nice here and they just started drilling their first shaft, or input their first shaft on Tuesday, which goes essentially 25 feet into the bedrock below the river. So it's really, it's really, well, the thing about construction and everything is, seems like it's moving slow, but it takes a while to do it, but it's pretty fascinating. So this really is a once-in-a-lifetime.
It is, but in that one shaft, you said then there's rebar and everything else. But we were there when the concrete was being poured. There were 10 concrete trucks going in.
I think 11.
10 or 11, yeah, going in that one. And so they were starting on the first one and that's the first of 28. So it's pretty major. Anyway, just wanted to let people know that if you're interested in looking at those pictures. Thank you.
Item G, Health Agency, number one, consider approval of request to fill three vacant registered nurse positions through a temporary staffing service, Cascade Health Services, at a cost of $50.95 per hour per position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alice Weingartner, Health Agency. And I will first say that my memo was not the best written memo and so I do need to explain a little bit of what I'm actually asking for. We do have three nurse positions that are currently vacant. One of those positions is currently filled with a contract nurse that we've had in place since last May. And we want to be able to continue with her at least through the end of June. The second position that we have, we want to start with a new contract nurse through the staffing agency. They've identified someone who can start as soon as Monday and who has some excellent experience that will be really helpful in this triage function that we're looking to fill. And then the third position, we would post through our normal posting process with the county and see if we can find a candidate who would actually apply for the position. So that's how we're looking to fill those positions at this time. And so I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Alice. Other questions?
I do not have any. I would move approval of the request.
There's a motion by Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Archer.
If I may, Madam Chair. If we were to hire someone to come into this position, what would we pay them, including benefits?
Well, at this point in time, the starting wage for an RN is about $17 or $18 per hour and that's the wage that's being posted. And I believe the new starting wage hasn't been finalized yet.
Not yet.
So that's the amount that's being posted.
So by going. So by going out to a third party, we're paying three times?
We are, and again.
The rate that we would hire somebody, I guess I understand that.
But that also, but that is also through an agency, and so the, the individual's not getting paid that rate, that's what the agency's getting paid, and then the individual's paid differently through them directly.
But it is about a hundred and six thousand dollars per employee, per year.
That's correct, yes.
And that's the bet, and that's the best we can do.
Yes, and the, the unfortunate thing is, when we've had these positions open, we have not been getting applications, and that's why I want to keep that third position open, because I am very hopeful that with the CBIZ study implementation, we may see more folks expressing interest in our positions.
But what, if I may, Madam Chair, but another thing to keep in mind is, this is a bridge.
That is exactly right.
Till June thirtieth.
Exactly.
When, hopefully.
Yes.
We will go to a, a different model.
That is correct.
Okay, I'll support this.
Short-term, hopefully.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just in that same vein, I fully anticipate that before the year is out, we will have transition to Grace Med.
Mm-hmm.
And that, it makes little to no sense to hire on a full-time employee in March, to then release that full-time employee in June.
Well, and I would say, though, with that third position, that we're looking to hire as a full-time person, that person would be looked at as part of that transition plan as well, and so being able to identify some of those folks that we can hopefully move forward with the transition will just help ensure that we have the staffing levels we need when that transition happens, so.
And one other point, if I may, is, if it wasn't for Washington bureaucracy, we would have had this done the first of this year, and we wouldn't be wasting, I don't mean wasting, but we wouldn't be spending this kind of money to implement the new model, so, uh, that should be pointed out, too.
I think the word "waste" is appropriate.
Okay.
I'll second the word "waste."
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Archer, all in favor of the motion say aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Number two, consider approval of request to create and fill an intermittent provider position at a cost not exceeding two hundred dollars per week.
Um, again, Commissioners, many of you, I'm sure everyone is aware, when Marion Clinic closed their operations at the end of 2015, um, we have experienced a pretty significant influx of new patients. At that same time, um, we had, um, two providers resign, and we also had a provider retire, and so Marion Clinic had the, um, um, fortunate work of having many volunteer providers who worked with them, and several of them have expressed an interest in continuing to provide care to this underserved, um, population, and so one of those individuals is looking to come in maybe one to two days a week, and we want to bring him in on intermittent status, um, to again, provide that, um, additional support in the clinic for care for patients, so, and you would, I also want to make it known that, you know, the wage that's established here at ten dollars an hour is not your typical, um, doctor's wage, but this is an individual who's very committed to this, um, community and to serving this population, and so he is very willing to work at that wage, so we greatly appreciate that. So that kind of makes up a little bit for the nursing cost.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook, all in favor say aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Item five, Administrative Communications, number one, project to pick a date night drawing.
Commissioner Tom Block, here with Public Works and Solid Waste, I actually have, have another item after this, in Administrative Communications, but, um, with Project Topeka going on, um, the department has, has done this for the past several years, in which, in our effort to try to raise some light to Project Topeka, uh, we create what we call a, a date night gift basket, I guess, if you will, in which we, uh, take donations for raffle tickets, or, and/or, um, canned food for, for raffle tickets. And Janet Morrissey of our department is the one who spearheads all this, so, she did not want to speak, but I made her come out, she didn't have to get up, but we would now want to do the drawing for this, and we typically, in the past, and we would like to continue, because the chair of the commission does the drawing, so that we don't get accused of being, you just can't draw your own name.
I've got a couple in there.
But I think, I think we raised, um, two hundred and forty-four dollars from people across the county, plus several, you know, canned food in addition, so, um, so we're here to have the drawing for that, so.
Good deal.
Commissioner Beulah, do the honors.
Janet, you come up, you come up.
I already have threats.
You have threats?
Barbara Lewis.
I don't know if you're ready.
Her extension is twenty-three forty-eight.
There we go. Sheriff's Office?
Barbara Lewis?
Yes.
Good, yay, congratulations. She will be excited, I'm sure, that's awesome.
And then, um, secondly, and we will have the vice chair agree with this drawing, um, at the, the recent lawn and garden show, um, Solid Waste has a, a booth there, and, as an attempt to get people to come talk to us, uh, we have a little sign that says, if you're interested in winning a free year of trash and recycling service, we'll tell you how, so they come up, and they put their name into a box, and, and so that's what we've done, we started this last year, and it worked out really well, people were pretty excited to go win trash. But we've done it again this year, and so we need to do the drawing for it, and if I could have, uh, Mr. Archer do the honors of this drawing, providing, don't draw your own name, I don't. Hopefully, yeah, I can. Winner is Nyla Miller, so, which I don't know who she is, but, last year, we actually gave the new customer out of this.
Very good.
And she might have won last year, her name sounds familiar to me.
Really?
So that'll be something else, but anyway, thank you very much.
Great, great work. And I think, um, Administrative Communications, is Kim wanting to say anything else, Jane?
No.
Not today, okay, but I know the auction does close, the online auction closes at what time tomorrow? Two o'clock, two o'clock. All right. Any other updates on, um, Project Topeka? No? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Shabon, General Manager at the Kansas Expo Center, uh, just want to invite you out, starting, uh, or continuing our busy weekends, actually all the way through March, uh, we have the NAIA National Wrestling Championships, uh, beginning tomorrow, and they're going to be broadcast, the championships are going to be broadcast nationally on ESPN Three Saturday, very nice, we're very, very excited about that. Uh, we have the Spirit Mine and Body Fair in Ag Hall, and the Central States Winter Tournament in Dahmer, so try and come out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, Commissioner Tom Block, again, I forgot, um, I was up here, this Saturday is the first Saturday of the month, so we will have our household hazardous waste collection, um, up at our facility, which is located at one thirty-one Northeast Forty-Sixth Street, and free of charge to county residents to drop off old paints, oils, um, light bulbs, batteries, pesticides, pesticides, what have you, so, just a reminder that will be going on from nine, and then again at one thirty-one Northeast Forty-Sixth Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Rachel Myers, Shawnee County Parks and Rec, Partnership Development Coordinator. I just wanted to come over this morning and tell you about a great example of building more partnerships and relationships within the community. Um, the Topeka Baseball and Softball Association offers leads for ages six to eighteen-year-old boys and girls here in Topeka at the Dornwood Sport Complex. They actually have an event that we are hosting with Dick's Sporting Goods four times this year, through an ad agreement that we have with Dick's Sporting Goods. Um, I did bring extra coupons today, twenty percent off, and how those can be used is the TBSA is actually hosting their Operation Recatch program that they do on an annual basis, and what that does is, the community is able to donate gently-used items or new items for the children to use as equipment and uniforms for the program. Um, we did print eleven thousand registration flyers that went out to local schools, and on that, we also included the Operation Recatch note as well, so even though children may not sign up to play, some of the families may donate items as well, so, just another good example, um, it's in cooperation with our Friends of Dornwood, and our Shawnee County Parks and Recreation Foundation as well. I will have extra coupons.
Awesome, thank you, Rachel.
If you'd like any.
Thanks. Anyone else, Dusty?
One Commissioner, Dusty Nichols, Emergency Management, um, as you probably are aware, this is the fiftieth anniversary of the nineteen sixty-six tornado this year, um, and in response to that, we are looking at different classes and, and, and opportunities to get information out, and, uh, this is probably more, more applicable this year than any, um, that, that tornado happened to go through all over the county, starting in Auburn, and went all the way across. So many of our townships were affected by that, so, um, we want to get the opportunity out there, express the opportunity, uh, that we are teaching an Incident Command System 402, in partnership with, uh, our city officials and the state, uh, we've had a lot of good, um, response to this already, so, the class went from three sessions to now we're at six, uh, intensive training for classes, so, uh, if you are running, uh, for an office or thinking about running for an office at a township level, uh, even on the private industry, volunteer organizations, the CEO level, that's what this course is designed for, and so, ICS 402, you can find it on KS dot train dot org, it's like KS train dot org, um, and search the 402 course, and then you can register for that course as well. Um, want to thank the state for sponsoring the course, and they're providing the materials, um, as a county emergency manager, I'll be instructing that course with City Emergency Management Coordinator Jim Green, so, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call us, we're on Facebook, Nextdoor, um, and Twitter, so, and you can call us directly at SNCO.us, look in up our organization as well.
And we're having a training in these chambers, March thirty-first, is that correct?
Twenty-ninth, I think it's on this one, but that one's, that one's for county officials only, these media, because of the people who will potentially show up, there will be media releases, uh, potential of a meeting situation, so, uh, we will take care of all those, those elements as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners?
Commissioner Archer?
Oh, uh, just quickly, uh, the Junior Achievement is having a banquet tonight, an awards banquet to, um, talk about the outstanding business leaders and recognition, and they include Dick Pratt, Eugene Williams from KTWU, Andy Corbin from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Neil Dobler from Bartley West, and I just wanted to congratulate them, uh, it should be a great event, and, uh, significant achievement. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cook, did you have a?
Yes, uh, just briefly, you know, I, it's really exciting to sit and be a part of the county commission at this time, some of the topics and subjects that we've been able to tackle over the last three, um, years have been really just monumental, things that have been outstanding for one year, or eight years, as the Willard Bridge may be, um, just to kind of recap, I mean, everything from the virtualization project, which I think we found notes indicating that should have been done in twenty oh six, um, or started recommendations of looking at virtualization and replacing on the mainframe, uh, election equipment that was outdated, that we've gone now to bonding and replace today, um, we encountered the safety net, how we offer more services to our people that can't afford medical care, the, uh, Willard Bridge replacement that we've been able to tackle, replacing, um, aging and, uh, facilities for recreation, such as the replacement of the Crestview Pool with the Midwest Health Pool, um, updating the Dornwood baseball diamonds, um, also our partnership with our employees in addressing salaries, and attracting new employees to come work for the county, and so, thank Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do this for our community, and I think that, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it with all of your help, and now that we have a number of our department heads here today, as we always do, but this is really a partnership, and, you know, we have the opportunity to make votes, but it's really your vision that allows us to do that, and so, thank you, department heads, and thank you for everything you do, and thank our employees.
You know, taxpayers who entrust us with those dollars to, to get work done.
Exactly.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cook, well, um, M&amp;M's arrived at the commission office, surprise, actually, uh, Mars, I, I think you've seen some mentioned in the press, they are celebrating seventy-five years, and, um, there's a, a rich history behind Mars, we're so thankful that they are here in our community, and they're, uh, they are growing, um, jobs, but they are also contributing to the community in a number of different ways, so, please feel free to take a couple of packages, and, yeah, John Knight, I don't want you to feel left out and get your M&amp;M, so, all right.
Better than John Knight is everybody.
But please take some, all right, anyone else, uh, for Administrative Communications, if not executive session, we do have a need, uh, for, uh, twenty minutes for non-elected personnel, um, and also consultation with, uh, the attorney.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Beulah, and second by Commissioner Archer, twenty minutes, all those in favor say aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. All right, we are back in session, no action required at this time, Mayor Jern.